This is the Thursday, April 15th, 2021 meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format. And is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. Does Emma know that we're doing this? Okay. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. Link to the virtual meeting via WebEx and a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to board members, please mute yourselves, because I hear somebody now, unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all of the applicant's witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the chair will ask the board for comment. These are instructions for public input. For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. Press the raise hand button to use this feature. Click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. Or use the chat function. Either use, either use the default, which is everyone, or chat Mark Healy. Do not send a message to Christine Woodbury as she is unable to review messages during the meeting. And do not ask, or do not use the Q and A in that section will not be checked during the meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via call-in number who wish to speak, press, please press star three. I just would like to say a side note for people who are listening or in via WebEx right now. We are not able to hear or see you, and that is the way it's supposed to be until we get to the portion of the meeting where Mark will tell you he's bringing you in. So we had somebody chat before and say, I'm saying hello and nobody's hearing me. We will not hear you as attendees until Mark brings you in. At the appropriate time of the meeting, township will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have an opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If writing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking on WebEx, please press the lower hand button. If calling, please press star three again. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, do you hear me?
I do hear you.
All right, I've lost all video of everybody, so we'll see what happens for a moment.
We can, we can see you and hear you clearly.
Okay, I just can't see any of you.
Okay.
Okay. Minutes of the meeting, March 4th, 2021, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, let's press backup. Would you call the roll?
Give me one moment, one second. Mark, can I make your host now? Are you okay? Okay, one second while I make more calls.
Okay.
Hit the stop video, Bob.
What's that?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to call roll right now, so please mute yourselves until I get to your name, okay? Shale Bethia and Mr. Robert Shepherd asked to be excused. I'm just gonna put that out there in the beginning. Bruce McCracken? You're muted, Bruce. I can see your mouth moving, so I'm gonna take that as a here. Joe Reese?
Yeah.
Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Rich Prokanic?
Here.
Malakia? Vaseem Fardas?
Here.
And Chairman Thomas?
Here.
Okay, moving on to the minutes, the regular meeting, March 4th, 2021. We have a motion.
I move to accept the move. One second.
Okay.
Bruce McCracken? Bruce, you're on mute right now, and I need to hear your vote.
Yes.
Got it, thank you. Joe Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here. I mean, yes.
Rich Prokanic?
Yes.
Vaseem Fardas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Moving to the hearings section, Cedar Hill Holdings LLC, ZBA 1900041. Applicants seeking a D variance to allow operation of a summer day camp. A site plan to install soccer field, running track, at 152 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, Lot 424.12, Lot 6.03, in the JR40 zone. This has been carried to an date that's yet to be determined. Further notification will have to be given for everyone. Should, does that cover everything for this?
Yes, it will be posted on the Franklin Township website that this matter has been carried. And then anybody who's within 200 feet of this applicant will receive a notice when it has, when the date has been determined, when it's carried to.
Okay. Moving on then to our first hearings. So, Saruba Abisha Desai, ZBA 210006. It's a C variance in which the applicant wants to construct an ingame pool at Three Corwin Court, Somerset, Lot 424.11, Lot 10, in the CR zone. Let's see if we can get everybody on board here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? I'm hearing myself through Christine's, so it seems like you can hear me now.
I can hear you.
Okay, great.
I can hear you anymore.
Great, thank you, everybody. All right, so I brought in the applicant, and the applicant has an engineer planner and a contract, bringing the three of them in.
Okay, anytime we're ready.
His attorney? I'm sorry, isn't there a, they have every sign, let me bring the attorney in, Mr. Pape? Okay, when you're ready, Mr. Pape?
Hi, good evening. Is my audio coming through?
Yes, we can see and hear you fine.
Great, thank you. Good evening, all. My name is Jerry Pape. I am an attorney with the law firm of Hall, Brenna, Pick. And our firm has the privilege and responsibility of representing the Desai family. Before we begin this presentation, could I ask, I'm not sure if it would be the board attorney or secretary, to confirm that the legal notices that we provided for this application are sufficient to provide the board jurisdiction?
Yes, you emailed me the notice, and I reviewed it for proper language with the link and, and the access code, and everything was fine.
Thank you. I would like to begin just with a few opening remarks about this application prior to calling our witnesses for testimony. Our clients, the Desai family, are residents of town. They've been so for about 20 years. They've lived in this particular house during that time. They've raised their children here. Children are now in teen years or approaching teen years. And they, both children have expressed a deep interest in swimming, both competitively and recreationally. So the pool that is being proposed on the property is a recreational facility for the family that was specifically designed to incorporate a standard length swim lane with a dimension of 75 feet for the competitive swimmers in the family. There are some characteristics about this property that I would like to bring to the board's attention. This is a pre-existing lot with a single-family residence that's part of an established subdivision. Property is located at the corner of Corwin Court and Alton Drive. And technically, the township ordinance creates a front yard status for what is functionally a side yard. So functionally, the side of the property facing Corwin Court is a side yard, but technically, under the ordinance, it is deemed a front yard. And we acknowledge that the ordinance includes certain protections to make sure inappropriate uses do not appear, or do not show up in front yards. But I would like to point out that our client has and maintains a six-foot white vinyl fence that runs along Corwin Court. It actually runs along the entire perimeter of the yard. And the reason I bring this to your attention is that the visual impact on the neighborhood is already in place. The location of the proposed pool is within the existing fence, and the applicant is proposing to keep that fence in place. And I think that's, we think that's significant information with regard to the variances that we're requesting. As for witnesses, the only witness I intend to call this evening is Chester DiLorenzo, who is the applicant's engineer and planner. But I would like to note that the Desai family is available, as well as Anthony Chiaboni, who is the president of Seasonal World. That's the pool contractor that the applicant is using for the construction of the pool. So they are available if there are specific questions, but I only intend to call Mr. DiLorenzo. So if there are no questions at this time, with the board's permission, I would like to have Mr. DiLorenzo sworn in.
Okay, call your witness.
Mr. DiLorenzo, could you, does he need to be sworn in?
Sure, just have him raise his right hand. I can't see him, so let me just see it. Can we see him?
He's, I can see him.
I can see him. Okay, now I got you. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God, I do.
Okay, if you can just, I'll let your attorney introduce you.
Mr. DiLorenzo, could you please provide your professional and educational background for the board?
I'd be happy to. I'm a 1976 graduate from Villamo University, majoring in civil and environmental engineering. I, I work, have worked as an environmental engineer. I've built hazardous landfills, I've done gas pipelines, but particularly, I work in land use, having worked for many developers, including the Habnanians, Toll Brothers, and H.R. Horton. I received my professional engineering license in 1983. I received my planning license in 1983. I received my professional land surveying license in 1989. Presently, I'm a PE in eight states, I'm an LS in two states, I'm only a PP in New Jersey. I appear before boards of this nature approximately 50.
Okay, we can, we can accept the.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question of Mr. DiLorenzo. All of your licenses are currently up to date?
They are, and I have testified in Franklin before, but it's been 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, very much. So just to confirm, does the board accept Mr. DiLorenzo as an engineer and planner for this matter?
Yes, we accept him.
Thank you. Mr. DiLorenzo, could you just provide an overview of both the existing conditions and what the applicant is proposing?
Absolutely. Under existing conditions, the, the Desais live in the corner of Corwin and Alton, effectively on the, call it the southwest corner. Effectively, they have a one-third of an acre parcel of some 16,000 square feet. And they have a 1,645 square foot dwelling on that property along with the patio. They have an existing, as Mr. Pape stole my thunder, they have an existing PVC fence that runs around the property. This fence more or less hides the backyard from the contiguous neighbors and the roadways. And the, the applicants are desirous of installing a pool in their backyard, but not just a normal pool. Basically, a normal pool would be the, the small 20 by 15 pool that they're proposing. But they want to install a pool that is 25 yards long by eight feet wide, not exactly a recreational pool, for athletic purposes for their sons, who are both competitive swimmers. Effectively, because of this pool, it's going to project into the front setback, and we need a front setback variance, which is pointed out in the TRC report. And there's going to be a side yard setback variance along the southern property line. There's a one-foot variance along the western property line. We've looked at it, and because, by sliding the pool one foot to the east, we can ameliorate that balance and get rid of the need for that balance, which I think would make the application cleaner, and also, I think it's beneficial for any applicant to attempt to comply where they can. Also, there's a variance that we just picked up recently, that the pool, the pool equipment can be deemed a garden shed. And although it's five feet from the rear property line, it is in the front yard setback on Corwin Court behind the fence, actually, some five feet behind the fence. But again, that's going to require a balance for its location. That could be relocated, however, it's our opinion that where it's located right now is the best location for the proposed equipment, because it's not, cannot be seen by the general public, and it's easily located where it can be maintained and serviced as necessary. Because of the improvised coverage caused by the patio, which is 1,400 square feet, there's stormer detention and mitigation required. We've done soil logs. We know that the site will handle an underground recharge basin located to the south of the property, the south of the dwelling. The basin is located in the long direction, which over, steps over the side yard setback line. We've looked at rotating that detention basin 90 degrees, again, based upon the technical review committee's report. And therefore, we will have no design waiver caused by the proposed recharge basin by our ability to make it conform with the standards. There are no trees in the backyard, they're gonna be knocked down. And I know the board has a long agenda, so rather than asking, waiting for engineering questions right now, I'll proceed into my planning testimony. I'll take all questions at the end, if it's okay.
That's the way we generally operate, that's fine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There's two ways looking at a C variance. One is a hardship, and the other is a, called a flexible C2, where the benefits outweigh the detriments. This particular lot has both situations. The hardship, and it's not exactly a self-inflicted hardship, the pool is 25 meters, 25 yards long, which makes it 75 feet long, therefore causing the variance. However, were this pool to be a situate on, say, Lot 11 or even Lot 8, any other lot other than the corner lot, we would have 15-foot side yard setbacks with a 75-foot pool, and 105-foot yard would fit perfectly. So essentially, we're, we're here asking for a variance because the pool is too long for a corner lot to handle, and which is a classical definition of a hardship variance on the, under the MLUL. I also choose to use the flexible C2 variance criteria with regards to the pool, because I think the benefits outweigh the detriments. The benefits being the ability for athletic excellence for two young township residents that are looking to excel at swimming right now. They're, they're dealing with drive times four days a week to Bridgewater for some three-hour practices. And they'd like to do it in their own home or in their own backyard for five months out the year when it's capable, so they can prepare themselves to excel at, at sports in, in high school and in the future, in college. So realistically, we're looking to have a overly long pool, which is overly narrow, only eight feet wide, into the front yard setback, so that these young athletes can be prepared for their futures in, in swimming. Again, I mentioned the pool equipment, which is a garden shed definition. It needs a variance as well. I've been able to get rid of the side yard variance caused to the west of the property, and to get rid of the design waiver caused by the detention basin being situated in the long direction instead of the short direction. So I've got two of them that I'm able to get rid of. And we're looking to get a variance, which, again, I feel that the benefits outweigh the detriments. The benefits being the recreational athletic capabilities, and the detriment's the fact that no one can see the, the pool from the street or any other, any other line of sight. I have bridged your master plan. I am familiar with the MLUL, and I've bridged your zoning ordinance. And I do realize that these are classic variances being requested, and I believe that there's no detriment caused by the variance, and that the benefits clearly outweigh the detriments. I know you have a long agenda, I'll, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. DiLorenzo. I have no further questions, and at this time, that is the applicant's direct presentation. If there are any questions, either for Mr. DiLorenzo, as I mentioned, the applicants are available, as well as the, Mr. Chiaboni from the pool contractor here as well. Happy to take any questions.
Have you heard from your neighbors?
I, I spoke to the applicant earlier, and he told me that he's had some informal conversations with their, there's two neighbors, one on Alton and one on Corwin, that's, that are adjoining neighbors. He told me that they have, they did not express any objections to, to what he's, to what's being proposed. And, and Mr. Desai is available if he wants to elaborate on that a little further. Obviously, he's the one who had the conversation.
Let me just interject. Obviously, the neighbors were notified of the hearing. If they do have concerns, they would have the right to show up and express it to the board. When we open to the public session in a few minutes, we can find out if those neighbors have any questions or concerns for the board.
Any other board questions?
Mr. Chairman, just two questions for Mr. DiLorenzo. So in your testimony, you indicated that, are you amending the application, if you will, to eliminate the one side yard variance to the west?
That is correct, Mr. Healy.
Okay. And I think you, you mentioned another change, when you were responding to the comment about chapter 330?
Responding to the, to the comment, the underground detention basin is, I believe, seven feet from the property line, and I believe it's supposed to be 15. I looked at rotating the underground detention basin, which is not a variance, but a design waiver. And by doing so, I will have no design waiver. So I, I've already indicated, I'm, I'm looking to rotate the underground recharge basin, so that it does not affect the contiguous neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything else from the board? I guess we should open to the public.
All right, so a reminder to the public, we are asking for comments or questions on this application. If you're on WebEx, you can do the raised hand function. If you're calling in, you can do the, you can press star three, which will raise your hand. I do see Mr. Michael Bell. I will call on you in a few minutes if you have a question on this application. Although, I will give you a, give other people a chance as well to raise their hand if they have any comments or questions on this application. And I'm gonna call on Mr. Bell. Mr. Bell, do you have any comments or questions for the board?
No, I was raising my hand in reference to the later part of this meeting, so I did so prematurely, I'm afraid. I don't have any questions about this.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you if you can do the raised hand, press that again to lower your hand. Like, at every time, you can raise your hand again, and we'll call on you at that point, okay? I think, I see that, thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing any members of the public wishing to comment or ask a question.
Okay, definitely, we can close the public. Any? Thank you. Number one.
If there are no further questions or comments, I'll make just a final comment, but I'll give it a moment in case there are any final questions or comments.
Mr. Thomas, if you can hear me, it looks like we lost you.
Okay, it looks like there are no comments. Make your statement.
Sure, not, not to be repetitive of Mr. DiLorenzo, but just to sum, you know, this, the Desai family, longtime resident, looking to make improvements to their property by creating this recreational facility and, you know, incorporate the swim lane for the competitive swimmers in their family. We think the visual impact is minimal because of the, the existing fence that is in place. And with that, we would ask the board to vote favorably on this application.
Okay, anything else from the board?
I, I, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I, I move that we, we grant the variance requested in ZBA-21-00006, as requested.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, call.
McCracken?
Yes.
Joe Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Vaseem Fardas?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Have a.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Good luck with the pool.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's Alton in the next group, the next applicant, which is Murano.
Okay, and this will be Murano, ZBA 200016, C variance, which the applicant proposes to construct a single-family house, 730 South Middle Bush Road, Somerset, Lot 3703, Lot 44.01, in the NRPC zone. Okay, are we getting everybody on board?
Okay, so I've brought in Mr. Lanford, who's the attorney. I've brought in Dan Dorgan, Kurt Redwick, and Susan Murano. Mr. Lanford, is there anybody else to bring in?
That is it. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, members of the board. Peter Lanford, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a C variance to construct a single-family dwelling on 730 South Middle Bush Road. As Mr. Healy indicated, that he brought in three individuals who are prepared to testify in this matter. However, I think I could probably foretell the testimony of Mr. Redwick, the architect, unless there are any questions of the architect from the board. I intended to call Mr. Murano, my first witness, and then Mr. Duran, to present testimony in support of the C variance. If we can have Ms. Murano sworn.
Sure, if you could raise that right now, Mr. Tom. You swear that it's something you are about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, is anybody else getting background noise?
I hear some background noise, yes.
I think it's from you, Peter.
I hear background noise, Peter. I hear some background.
I don't, or is, is it, there's still noise there. Let, let's try to move without it. I don't think it's coming from my end, but. Susan, you are the owner of the property at 730 South Middle Bush Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and where do you currently reside?
I reside at 1 Kingsbridge Road, Somerset, New Jersey. We have been here for 37, going on 38 years.
And now, the property that is the subject of this application was purchased by you and your husband, James, is that correct?
Correct.
And, Mr. Lanford, just wanted to get feedback.
And let me, let me get feedback. I think it's, sorry to interrupt you, but I think the feedback is coming from you, Mr. Lanford.
Do you want me to get out and come back in?
Yeah, well, it's whatever you speak, that's when the, that's when the chatter comes.
I'll, I'll, I'll get out and hopefully I can get back in.
All right, we, we can take a couple minutes break.
I am back. Is this better? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
There's still some background. Can you talk through that before you start your testimony? The recording secretary is going to be able to hear you, so just.
Is it background?
Definitely background from you.
Good, sorry, yeah. The only thing I could suggest is I can, I could start up another computer, maybe it won't be a problem. Uh, if you want to give me two minutes, I will fire up another computer and see if I can not have the background noise.
You seem better now, all the time.
Am I okay to go?
I think you're good.
Cross your fingers.
There you go.
Because I'm, I'm still hearing the background, but we'll, we'll try. Uh, and if not, like I said, I do have another computer available. I can always shut this one down and start the other one up. Uh, Ms. Murano, I'm, I'm sorry for whatever we're having as far as technical difficulties. Uh, again, you purchased the property at seven thirty South Middle Bush Road?
Yes.
And when did you buy that property?
November twenty nineteen.
And the purpose of purchasing the property is to build a home for you and your husband?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and prior to you purchasing the property, do you know what was on the property?
Yes, sir. Would you like me to?
Yes.
There was a farmhouse, there was a farmhouse, an old farmhouse that burned. There was a large barn in the back. There was a large metal building, and I believe something like a carport, and a large windmill.
Okay. Now, this, this property is a property street plus acres, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And it is a little bit unusual in that the property does front both on South Middle Bush Road, which has an address of seven thirty, uh, South Middle Bush Road, and it also fronts on Matterwang, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and one of the unique aspects of this application is that you, uh, this is a through lot and that it has frontage on two streets, uh, and you want to provide a driveway both to Matterwang and to South Middle Bush Road, correct?
Correct, correct.
And can you indicate to the board why you want to have a second driveway going out to Matterwang?
Um, I am, uh, I have, um, multiple sclerosis, M S, and I have some difficulty on my left side. I am in a wheelchair most of the time, um, but I do, um, have a business I go to every day. I drive. Um, but I am fearful of getting out on Middle Bush Road at certain times during the day. It's very hard, and I, I'm a little fearful about getting out there sometimes. So the back way would give me a way that I could make a right turn and a left turn, um, as needed if I have to leave.
Okay, and, and so if you, if you use the back driveway and go down Matterwang to Claremont, uh, by going out to Claremont, you can either access, uh, South Middle Bush Road at a traffic light or Route twenty-seven at a traffic light, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and yet you will also maintain the existing driveways at, uh, on South Middle Bush Road, correct?
Yes, sir. That is the primary.
And, and that will be the driveway that will be used for any guests that come to visit you, for any deliveries, uh, for all your Amazon packages or whatever else you may be getting to the house, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, then I also, I just want to ask you one other question. Uh, we are seeking a rear yard variance, uh, because we have moved the house back about two hundred feet from, uh, South Middle Bush Road. Uh, can you indicate to the board why you wanted to set the house further back onto the property?
Um, the first reason would be because of the noise that, um, South Middle Bush generates, uh, especially at certain times during the day. Um, we're moving out there for some peace and quiet. You look across the street from Middle Bush from the front door, and it's open, uh, space. It's absolutely delightful, and I would like to keep it as tranquil as possible.
Thank you. I have no further questions. I would like to, I would like to, uh, Mr. Duran is my next witness.
Mr. Duran, would you raise your right hand? And do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Duran, can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background, keeping in mind that you testified in Franklin before this board on numerous occasions, so be brief?
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer, land surveyor, and planner here in the state of New Jersey. I've been a member of the firm of Williams Orienteds for over thirty years. And as Mr. Lanford just stated, I previously testified in front of this board and boards similar to yours throughout the state.
Okay, this is fine. We, we can move forward.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Thomas. You will be presenting testimony this evening, Mr. Duran, both as an engineer and as a planner, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and will you be using any exhibits this evening? Will you be putting the plan up on the board?
Yes, I think that'd be an advantage if we could share, uh, the variance plan that was submitted with the application. Do I need to get authority to be able to share that plan?
Mr. Healy will provide that to you.
Good to go.
Okay. Okay. Can everybody see the plan?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the plan, the variance sketch that was prepared by our office and submitted with the application. Just to orient ourselves, north is up the page. Uh, this is the property itself. On the west side of the property is South Middle Bush Road. At the southeastward corner is Matterwang Drive. And just to reiterate the existing conditions, this lot and its configuration, a three-point-one-two acre site, has been in existence for an extended period of time. The existing driveway that is located right here serviced the former, uh, house that was located on the property. That house used to sit right in this area here. And as Mrs. Murano had stated, there are a couple other additional buildings, a, a carport, a twenty-six-hundred-square-foot metal garage, and a twenty, uh, two, a twenty, I'm sorry, two thousand square foot, two-story frame box, which is located in the area where the proposed dwelling is to be located. All of those existing improvements were removed from the site by the former owner prior to Murano's taking possession of the site. As far as the proposed conditions are concerned, this hatched area here is a proposed dedication to Somerset County for the, uh, proposed widening of South Middle Bush Road. Along the entire length of the property itself, it's about nineteen point three seven feet in width. The proposed dwelling, which is right here, will be approximately two hundred and eighteen feet from the proposed right-of-way line on South Middle Bush Road. The existing driveway will be expanded and improved in order to maintain that access to South Middle Bush Road and providing access for the proposed dwelling. The applicant is proposing a second driveway on the south side of the house that will provide access out the southeast corner onto Matterwang Drive. As far as the zoning, uh, the, the site is located in the A zone, which is the agricultural zone. And it's an interesting thing to point out that this site is the only property located on the east side of South Middle Bush Road from Claremont Road all the way up to Lenate Drive that is in the A zone. All the surrounding properties that are joined and abut this particular site were created by the subdivision in nineteen ninety-seven, and they are all located in the N R P C zone, Natural Resource Protection Cluster. And I'd like to point out that a majority of these lots, or the average size of these lots, are two to two and a half acres in size, which is smaller than the three-acre size of the subject properties. The frontage of the surrounding properties ranges anywhere from two hundred feet to two hundred and twenty-five feet, which again is smaller than the frontage of the subject site on South Middle Bush Road, which is three hundred and thirty feet. The applicant is seeking a number of variances. The first two are lot area in the A zone. A six-acre is the minimum requirement, or three-point-one-two acres is the existing condition of the site, and a lot frontage of four hundred feet as required by the A zone, where the applicant has three hundred feet along South Middle Bush Road and approximately thirty-six feet on Matterwang Drive. These are all existing conditions. Uh, the surrounding properties are all currently developed with no available lands in order for the applicant to bring the site into further conformance. These two variances will have no significant negative impact to this, uh, zoned land zone ordinance for the public good. As Mr. Lanford has stated, the applicant, due to the fact that they would like to keep the house that, uh, two hundred and eighteen feet from South Middle Bush Road, they're requiring and seeking a rear yard variance of a hundred and five feet where in the A zone, a two-hundred-foot rear yard is required. Now, it's important to point out that the existing dwellings located on Matterwang Drive range from seventy-five feet to eighty-five feet in a front yard setback. And the applicant is proposing the hundred and five feet, which is greater than that distance that a majority of the homes on Matterwang Drive currently sit from, uh, the road. I'd also like to point out that lot twenty-five, which is the property directly to the east of the subject site, the dwelling that is located on this property is at the intersection of Lenate and Matterwang Drive. And the distance between the proposed dwelling and the dwelling that sits on lot twenty-five is over four hundred and fifty feet. This is a C two variance, where in order to have this variance granted, the applicant needs to demonstrate that the purpose of zoning would be promoted as a result of granting the variance. And I believe that purpose C, which speaks about adequate light air in open space, is still provided, as you can see, for, uh, the subject site and the proposed location of the dwelling. There's adequate light air and open space still provided, uh, on the site and its relationship to the, uh, existing dwelling on lot twenty-five. The, the final variance that the applicant is seeking is for the additional driveway add-on to Matterwang Drive. Now, the township ordinance does not permit through, uh, lots, but I think it's important to note that the existing driveway, which provides access to South Middle Bush Road, is not connected to the proposed driveway that will be accessing Matterwang Drive. And Mr. Lanford had pointed out that the site address is seven thirty Matterwang Drive, so that any visitors to the site, um, or any deliveries being made will utilize that address and utilize the existing driveway from South Middle Bush Road in order to come to the site, and that the proposed driveway will mainly be utilized by the applicant. Again, we need to demonstrate that a purpose of zoning is promoted as a result of the granting of the variance, and purpose J, which promotes the utilization of existing infrastructure, creating a safe condition for the applicant, is promoted as a result of allowing this additional driveway. And I believe that the granting of the rear yard variance and the additional driveway will not create any substantial negative detriment to the zoned land zone ordinance or the public good. I think it's also important to point out that the applicant has received approval from the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, and they've approved, uh, have, uh, received conditional approvals from the Somerset County Planning Board and the Delaware Heritage and Alcommission.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. I have just a couple of very brief questions. One, uh, in order to construct the new driveway out to Matterwang, there will be, there are required to be removed certain trees that currently exist as the rear of that property is, is currently wooded, is that correct?
That's correct, and I, I, uh, did not point out the fact that this area right here is currently vegetated. The remaining portion of the rear yard where the dwelling will be located is a maintained lawn area, and the applicant has agreed to, uh, do their best to, uh, retain any trees that possibly can in this vegetated area, and then to also landscape and supplement those existing trees with vegetation along the entire easterly border of the property.
Okay, and then to the extent that we are removing trees, we will in fact be replacing as many trees as possible on the site, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Okay, finally, uh, in order to build the house, the, the T R C has issued a staff report dated March third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we can comply with all of the conditions of that, that staff report, is that correct?
Yes, yes, we can.
And as part of that, there is, there is also provision that we have to comply with the township stormwater ordinance. So this site, once it is developed, will also have some stormwater management, uh, to prevent, uh, flooding on adjoining properties, is that correct?
That is, and we've already received approval, as I state, from the Soil District and the Delaware Heritage and Alcommission, which have already reviewed our proposed stormwater measures, and, um, I'm sure that will meet the townships and the state's requirements.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Okay, are we have any further witnesses?
Uh, I do have the architect, but I am not going to call him unless any of the board members have any questions about the dwelling itself, but I will, I will not call him in order to set the board some time.
All right, any board members have questions?
I, I do have one question. Um, I, I understand the need for the driveway on Matterwang, but why, what's the need for the driveway on South Middle Bush?
That, that's going to be the major axis to this.
But isn't the address of the property on Matterwang?
No, it's, it's seven thirty South Middle Bush Road. That the previous house fronted on South Middle Bush Road, this house will face South Middle Bush Road. Uh, so all visitors and- Uh, so all visitors and guests and, uh, delivery people will access the property to, through the driveway on South Middlebush Road. The only one who will use the rear driveway on Mattewang, which is going to be the new driveway, is, uh, is the applicant, Mrs. Morano and her husband.
Okay, I, I may have misunderstood. Thank you.
I have a question about the driveway too. I'm not, I'd just like to hear a little more, uh, justification for not having, for just, for having two driveways. I, I look, uh, at the original driveway on the South Middlebush Road, uh, you have, it's really a pretty big, long, straightaway stretch of South Middlebush Road. There's really good disability, and most of the houses along South Middlebush Road exit and enter, uh, seemingly without a lot of trouble. I'm not, I'm not convinced why this is necessary yet to have a separate driveway.
It is, as Mrs. Morano indicated, uh, she has a concern, uh, especially as rush hour and, uh, as you are well aware, Mr. Chairman and members of board, South Middlebush Road, uh, from seven to nine in the morning and about four to six in the evening on eight days, is different than South Middlebush Road the rest of the time. And, uh, if Mrs. Morano needs to get to work, and she indicates she is employed, uh, she has a concern because of her disabilities, uh, of trying to access South Middlebush Road during those rush hour periods. Uh, again, the driveway that we are proposing out to the back will only be available to Mrs. Morano and her husband. It will not be connected to the, the main driveway and the main entrance, and just provides her the ability to, uh, exit the property during those times, uh, either during AMP peak hour or PM peak hour when, uh, accessing South Middlebush Road can be very difficult at those times.
Uh, is that informing, from what you said, that she has to come out of her driveway on South Middlebush Road to go to work and make a left turn?
Uh.
Uh, what now does she work in?
We can, we can ask her those questions. I, I don't have the answer to that, so is it going to have Mrs. Morano respond?
I will make a left turn. My business is located on Jersey Avenue.
Uh, I'm s- I'm just still not convinced that, that it's necessary to have two driveways. And what, and then we also have to deal with the fact that the, the back of the house is, is facing the street on the other side, which is not, uh, a normal situation. How about, you know, was there any thought to just facing the house on Mattewang and closing off the, uh, access to South Middlebush?
Mr. Chairman, the, the, the access on Mattewang, the property only has thirty-six feet of frontage on Mattewang Drive. If you look at the, uh, exhibit, you can see the stretch of Mattewang Drive where the proposed driveway is going to come in. After that, it is not, the property doesn't front on Mattewang Drive, it's, it's basically adjacent to somebody else's property. Uh, and I think the issue that, and as Mrs. Mor- Miss Morano indicated, is that, you know, she picked this property and picked this lot because she wanted to view, uh, across South Middlebush Road from the front of her property, uh, which is all preserved formally. And so to, to orient the house the other way doesn't afford that, that the other problem becomes then if you turn the house completely around, then her backyard faces South Middlebush Road, and if she has family activities and other things, uh, all of her activities are going to be out closer towards South Middlebush Road, and I don't think you really want a backyard on South Middlebush Road.
Well, it is a three-acre site, it's not, it's not like it's being, anybody's being cramped. Uh, the other side of that is, part of that, that driveway, uh, to Mattewang, Mattewang is taking some of the, the best vegetation from the property in terms of, of blocking a few, uh, of the back of the house. I, I, I'll, you know, I'll look at everything, I'm not completely convinced that this is necessary, but I'll, I'll listen to other board members also. Are there any other questions? Okay, are you calling another witness?
Uh, I, I assume as nobody's directed a question concerning the house itself or the architecture, I'm not going to call any additional witnesses.
Then I guess it would be appropriate to open to the public?
Okay, so again, to the public, this is for comments or questions on this application. Um, if you're, uh, participating via web acts, you can use the raise hand function, or if you're calling in, you can press star three. I do see, uh, one person with his hand up, John Lee, I'll, go ahead.
Hi, how you doing? Thank you, uh, helpful for taking my questions, uh, Susan Morano. Um, so the question, I, I live at, uh, thirty-seven Mattewang, uh, immediately across the drive from this property. Um, I know that you're planning to build, you're, you're looking to have a variance to build, uh, a secondary driveway, but that particular bend, uh, even though it's fifteen miles per hour, there are tons of car, obviously not in comparison, comparison to South Middlebush Road, but there are a ton of cars that come flying around that corner, uh, which I think you should be concerned with as well. And, you know, based on where you're locating that driveway, it's, it's very tight when it, it, right now, currently, if you come down our street, there's a twenty-foot stretch tire mark on the street. So that means somebody was coming down from our cul-de-sac, going, exiting, uh, towards, uh, Lenape, and they, they slammed on their brakes. And there's tons of UPS trucks coming by, delivering, like somebody said, Amazon packages all the time. So I think there's a risk there as well. Uh, I would say that if you are going to build a driveway, that other markers should be available on the road for any, um, any vehicles, like, um, you know, hidden driveway or even speed bumps to be placed on the road to prevent, you know, cars from flying down there. So that's one of the, uh, concerns I have. Um, uh, also, the area, I, I know this may be a minor point, but the area that we live in is town and country estates, and I think a lot of the residents here are, you know, they, they bought these property in, 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 in the value of, of that, and, you know, I feel that, you know, uh, creating a entry to the actual town and country estates is, you know, I guess, you know, not right considering, uh, the people paid additional money. I don't know if that's any value or relevance here, but, uh, those are my two points. Uh, and I did, I think Mr. Duran accidentally mentioned seven-thirty Mattewang Drive before, and I think it was clarified that all deliveries will be coming in on South Middlebush, that's good to know, and all guests, because if you have guests coming over, that's another safety issue, because there's nowhere to park. If you park on the street, that car could get hit. So, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so to the public, uh, Mr. Lee, if you could press the, um, the hand down button. I do see Daniel, Daniel Hanley. In the, uh, oh, mute you in a minute, make sure I unmute Mr. Lee. Okay, Ms. Hanley, go ahead.
My name, my name's Danielle Hanley, and I'm at one-fifteen Almond Drive. Just, um, because I'm not familiar with the address number structure, this plot of land is close to Snyder's Farm, correct? Was fairly close.
It, it is south of that, uh, there are at least one, two, three, four properties removed from Snyder's Farm, Louise.
Okay, but it's within a mile, correct?
Yes.
About. Okay. Um, can I just verify Mrs. Morano's testimony that the driveway on South Middlebush, um, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but there is a fear of making that turn due to traffic? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, uh, let's see, I have, um, last name is Rao. Oh, unmute you, Rao.
Hi, uh, thank you. So, uh, I have two concerns with this plan. First of all, the house with, uh, you know, front driveway and back driveway is a little bit odd in this area, and, uh, the back driveway, which is going to open on Mattewang Drive, uh, it's, I mean, since there is gravel in the road, so it's not perfectly very safe up there, you know, so, uh, you will understand what I'm saying if you, if you see the property exactly. So this notion that this, uh, this driveway is going to be easier may not be, uh, you know, correct there, because there could be some security concerns, as was mentioned in the, um, on the call before. Uh, so that's, that's one comment I have. And the second comment, uh, looking at the house, I just wanted to confirm that this is a truly a single-family house. Are we, uh, I hope it's, it's not meant for multiple families in future.
This is a single-family house in a zone that only allows single-family houses.
Okay. Okay, thanks for clarifying that. The, the concern, the first concern is still, uh, stands from outside, it's a little bit odd to have two driveways. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And we have another person, last name is, uh, Chahan, excuse me if I didn't pronounce that correctly, go ahead.
Uh, hello, everyone. Um, so I am, I am one of the neighbors of this, uh, this property, uh, Lot Number Twenty-nine, to Lenape Drive, and I actually reiterate the, the same concerns which Mr. Lee and, and, uh, Mr. Rao just said. Uh, this is a community, and, uh, if, if they open a driveway into Metta Lane, right, it, it kind of will become a house in, in this community, and it will be kind of very odd, but other houses have only one driveway and this specific one has two. Um, and also the, the reasons, uh, I don't want to repeat myself, what Mr. Lee said, that when we bought this property, uh, we paid like M amount, uh, uh, for, uh, for all these, uh, uh, roads like Metta Lane, Lenape, and the number of households that will be there and the cars that will be there that will be using this, uh, these roads. Any extra cars, uh, not just for this family, but, uh, uh, but, um, uh, like all the deliveries, Amazon packages and things like that, and also like friends that will come in, those, those will add, uh, lot of, lot of cars and, uh, in- increase the risk, like what Mr. Lee was earlier mentioning, because it's a very, uh, curvy road at, uh, that specific point in Mattewang. So it would actually, uh, uh, a spot like where, uh, chances of accidents or mishaps can happen. So the same concerns.
Second one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give the board, give the public a few seconds here to raise their hand.
It would be convenient for them. It would be very unwraveling. Is that a question?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Okay, then we're close to the public and get ready to move on. I, I have a question, I guess, uh, for our attorney, is it possible to deed restrict driveway use? See, my con- my concern is, I think that, uh, Mrs. Morano has good intentions and everything like that, but at some point, you know, she, she'll consider moving out and somebody else will move in, and I can see this driveway going directly from the back of the house into a garage becoming, you know, being a very, very easy place to have things delivered to and moved into a house as opposed to a front door. And I'd like to see that that restriction that she's basically agreeing to is carried on to future owners, is that possible?
Yeah, so let me understand it, Mr. Chairman, you're, you're talking about, eh, eh, exactly, I mean, restricting the use to just the residence ingress and egress from, uh, from the garage to the home?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I, I think the board can impose the condition, you know, that, that limits the, the use of that driveway for that purpose, there is an alternative driveway, and I think the testimony on the record is clear that, you know, that, that driveway is intended to be the main driveway that would serve, you know, visitors accessing, you know, coming to the property, uh, as well as deliveries, uh, to the home, and it's designed such that it, you know, it functions in that way. Um, so I, I approve that the board, you know, can, um, impose that type of, you know, condition as part of, uh, uh, of an approval.
Okay, thank you. Is, are there any other board questions or comments or?
I have one more question, or actually two. Um, you know, a few concerns were raised about the safety of that driveway on Mattewang. Um, did the engineer perform any sightline studies to ensure proper, you know, sightline?
For the speed limit that it's, for, for the speed limit that it's, uh, that it's designated at, yes, there is adequate sight distance both in a north and southerly direction for that proposed driveway on Mattewang Drive, yes. We, we can certainly show those, uh, sightlines, they're not on the plan, but we can certainly show them on our plan when we submit for building permit.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and then a couple of the other, uh, members of the public, um, had, had mentioned, um, what, what sounded kind of like homeowners association, eh, are, are there any associations, um, tied to any of these properties on Mattewang or, uh, Lenape?
I wouldn't know that. But Mattewang is a public right-of-way, it's a public road, I, I don't know if there are any homeowners associations. I know as part of that, uh, development, there's some open space, but I don't know who manages that open space or things of that nature.
Okay. Um, thank you, those were my only, my only two questions, um, but just a, a comment, uh, would be that I, I would much prefer to see one driveway as opposed to two. Uh, from my perspective, whether it be South Middlebush or Mattewang, as long as it was constructed safely, uh, I, I personally would be okay with either or, uh, I would just much prefer to see one and not two.
Other questions or comments?
Okay, I have a question, uh, or just wanted to confirm, Mrs. Morano said, I guess with the hesitance to make a left on Middlebush from your property, I guess what you're saying is that if you go on Mattewang, you'll be able to Middlebush at a traffic light and that would make it easier, is that, is that what you said?
If I go out the back, I go to, um, I can't remember the name of the road, but it's the light at the school.
Okay, so you have, correct.
Correct.
So that'll be, okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, Mr. Lamford.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, and, and I, I think to get a better picture of everything, uh, if the board would refer to the TRC report, uh, page four, it clearly shows the subject property, it shows Mattewang and the code and where the proposed driveway would be, and, and I think...
and where the proposed driveway would be and, and, and I think that may help the board in looking at this application. Um, with respect to a few of the comments of the neighbors, it is not intent of the Morano's to use that driveway for deliveries, for guests, uh, for visitors, it is solely, uh, for their purpose as indicated, uh, by Mrs. Moreno who has certain, certain needs. Uh, we would have no problem if the board wanted to put a restriction on that driveway to restrict the use uh, of that driveway to Mr. and Mrs. Moreno and no one else. I have no further, I would have no further objection to even signing that driveway and saying that there would be no deliveries or, uh, any visitors at that driveway. Um, with respect to the rest of the application, this property has always had a house on it, uh, until a fire took the house down about three years ago. All of the other variances that we are seeking are either existing conditions, uh, which are not exacerbated by this application, uh, or the rear yard variance, which I think was uh, clearly testified to by Mr. Duran as far as justification for it, that it is not impacting anybody and, and this property does have a rear yard of over a hundred feet, which is far in excess of any of the residences, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, obviously, the, the driveway is, is a concern, but I think, uh, the board needs to weigh the benefits to the owner applicant, uh, given her condition and as to whether there is any negative impact, again, uh, when we talk about safety, Mr. Duran indicated that exiting that driveway, uh, there is visibility and obviously, knowing people exiting that driveway would be Mr. and Mrs. Moreno who would know, uh, that there is a code there, but again, Mr. Duran indicated that there are adequate sight distances, adequate visibility e- exiting that driveway, and there are not, there'd be any other individuals using that driveway. So, uh, I think for the reasons testified to by, uh, Mrs. Moreno and by Mr. Duran, I think the board can grant uh, all of the variances that we are seeking and, uh, we would accept the reasonable conditions that the board, uh, may want to impose regarding the limited use of that rear driveway. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Duran a question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Duran, you'd mentioned that there would be some, uh, there'd be an attempt to save as many trees as possible in the rear and, and provide a landscape screen along entirety of the easterly property line. Can you describe the nature of that screening that you, that you intend to propose?
A landscaping plan will be developed for the entire site. And as I stated, we, we spoke to the Morano's and they will maintain or retain any existing trees that are currently in that southeast corner of the property, but they will also supplement it with, uh, a- additional deciduous and evergreen trees along the entire easterly border of the property and create to create an adequate buffer between the rear of their property and Mata Wang Drive.
Okay, so, a- and what I'd like to do is just stress the importance of that, um, and that was pretty much the most significant comment, in my opinion, in the T R C report, but look at page six, and you see the photo looking down Mata Wang, you see that existing vegetation. And I think if the, if the proposed house was placed behind that existing vegetation, I think the impact to, or the visibility, I should say, of that existing house would be minimal. And imagine all that vegetation is gone, it's a very nice house, but nonetheless, you'd be looking at the rear of the house. So I would suggest if the board is inclined to approve the application, that the wording be something along the lines, obviously describing what Mr. Duran just spoke of, that something indicating that there would be a, a screen substantially sim- similar to what exists currently, consisting of a combination of the ex- retention of the existing vegetation and proposed landscaping to supplement, again, such that the proposed screen would be similar in effectiveness to what it currently exists.
Mr. Haley, uh, I am sure the Morano's would have no objection, uh, if, if you were to visit their current, uh, dwelling, it, it is immaculately maintained and landscaped and this property will be the same, so, you know, we will obviously do everything to, um, make sure that this property, uh, will be comparable, if not better than other properties in this neighborhood.
Okay, any other questions from the board or comments? I just also had one, uh, additional thought in connection with the rear driveway, uh, the, the limit to their entrance and exits, but also the, the wording or the idea that the, uh, rear one should never in the future be connected with the front one. As Mr. Lanford pointed out, it's technically not a through driveway right now because there's no, no connection for that. That's the way it, it shouldn't remain, either with heavy landscaping or whatever. So there's not even a temptation to have them connected ever in the, in the event the house goes to another, eventually another owner.
Uh, that could be a deed restriction as well as the other deed restriction that you referenced before, and we would have no problem with that.
Okay, anything, anything else from the board? If, if not, we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that, uh, so we approve C B A twenty dash zero 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 one six, uh, with the following conditions. Uh, the back of the driveway would only be for the owners. Um, and the two driveways will not be connected in any way. And the current issue in the back by Mata Wang Drive would be left there or added to. And also signage there on that back driveway saying that it's a private drive with no exit. And, um, I'm open to amendments to that or, or discussion.
Okay.
I'll say that, I, I think we should add, add the restriction that, that it cannot, the driveway cannot be passed on to, to another owner of the property. Or how, however you word that.
You're inferring that on a new owner, that the driveway just doesn't exist anymore?
Right. That the second driveway is only fit for this current owner.
Uh, I'm openly hearing thoughts or comments.
My, my only comment would be, that's gonna be very hard to enforce. Fifteen years from now.
I agree with that.
Can you hear me?
Uh, now I can, yeah.
Now I can, okay. I would just, I would just caution the board that that's, that's a pretty hard condition to track.
I agree.
Okay, I withdraw.
Okay, any other comments, additions, amendments to the motion or second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? Hold the board, please.
Mr. Duran, could you please drop out your screen?
Yes, I can, uh, let's see, how do I do that?
Bruce McCraven?
Yes. Yes. Yes, if you can hear me.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich Crocane?
No.
Yes. Chairman Thomas?
Uh, I, I still don't think that the second driveway is necessary. With the restrictions and the conditions, I think it, uh, is as good as it can be as far as making it work, though I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, uh, Data Bagwan Vigna Institute, Z B A nineteen oh 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 forty.
Mr. Thomas? Yes. While Mr. Haley's bringing in my responses, uh, I have to sort of move out files around, can we take five minutes?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You look as ready, Mr. Lanford, is that?
Uh, I am organized as I can be.
Anytime you're ready, Mark.
I'm good to go.
Okay, let me just make the, uh, quick announcement. Uh, is there any way of checking if we have all the board on, on board, so to speak?
Everybody should turn their cameras back on when they're back in their seats.
Well, I'll read the announcement, Data Bagwan Vigna Institute, Z B A nineteen oh 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 forty, D three conditional use variance, C variance in site plan, in which the applicant's asking to construct twenty-one thousand eighty-three square foot place of worship with parking lot, a five-foot monument sign at six thirty South Middlebush Road, lot thirty-seven point oh two, lot forty-six point oh three in the A-zone, this has been carried from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, with no notification needed and is the, probably the fourth, at least the fourth hearing in the series. Is everyone out there?
Check, we have all the board members back. And Mr. Lanford, who do you intend to call tonight?
Um, I, depending on how much time we have, I intend to call Mr. Bupendra Patel, Ms. Dolan, and also, uh, Mr. O'Brien.
So I just want to remind the public, um, that, uh, you know, as previous meetings, um, where this is a quasi judicial proceeding, which means, uh, Mr. Lanford's gonna, uh, present testimony, uh, from, uh, Mr. Patel. Uh, there will be questions from the board following his testimony, then we'll open it up to the public for questions on his testimony. Um, then we'll move forward with the next, uh, expert and go through the process as we have with previous meetings, so, uh, again, we're gonna go with, uh, we're kind of in the question and answer phase of the hearing with, with the, uh, different experts and different people providing testimony and then questions of the board and public of the, of that testimony. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lanford, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this, I believe, is the fifth meeting that we've been on this matter. Uh, and to very briefly refresh the board's recollection, uh, we have already presented the testimony of the architect, uh, who testified at the first meeting to, and described the building. And then we had, I believe, three meetings with testimony from Mr. Arndman, who described the original site plan. And at the last meeting, we presented to the board a conceptual plan, uh, with certain revisions that were arrived at as a result of uh, some extensive negotiations between, uh, the applicant uh, and the adjoining property owners, their attorneys, and Mr. Arndman. Uh, so this evening, I would like to move on to the testimony of Mr. Patel.
Has he been previously sworn, Mr. Lanford, or is he a new witness?
He is a new witness.
Thank you. Mr. Patel, if you could just raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bupendra, how are you?
Good evening, how are you, Peter?
Uh, you are one of the members of the congregation, uh, that is the applicant in this matter and you are also one of the members of the Board of Trustees, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and currently, uh, you are a five oh one, three C nonprofit and operate a house of worship, correct?
Yes, sir.
And where do you currently have your house of worship?
Uh, we are at six thirty South Middlebush Road in Somerset.
But at the present time, do you operate at, at a different location to conduct your religious services?
Yes, it is, uh, the headquarters is in Adalage, New Jersey, as Adalage in India.
Okay, and your priest is from India?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and at the present time, do you conduct services with members of your congregation at any location in New Jersey?
Yes, temporarily, before pandemic, we were, got together at the Sunny Day Care Center in One Ethel Road in Edison, New Jersey.
Okay, and how long were you having religious services at the Edison, New Jersey, location?
Prior to pandemic, about two, three years.
And how many members are in your congregation?
Locally, we have about seventy-five to a hundred in the central Jersey.
Okay, and when you say seventy-five to a hundred, that's families?
No, the persons.
Seventy-five to a hundred people?
Right, people, right.
Okay, now, in preparation for this hearing and in conjunction with this application, I asked you to prepare a chart of attendance at your Edison facility, did I not?
Yes.
Okay, and that chart, I'm going to ask Mr. Healy if he can share it on the screen.
Just give us a minute.
Mr. Lanford, was that submitted with the application, or is that a new? I'm not sure where things stand with the marking of exhibits.
This would be a new exhibit. I submitted it in advance of the hearing, but it was not part of the original application. So I think we should mark that as... Why don't, to play it safe, why don't we mark it A1 with today's date? Because I don't remember where Mr. Legano left off with his last exhibit.
Okay. So we'll mark it A1 for April 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Counselor. While Mr. Healy is trying to bring that up, I perhaps can ask a few questions, although I feel this is wrong. Mr. Patel, how many days a week do you have services at your current facility?
The current facility, are you referring to the Edison one?
Yes, what days of the week do you have services?
Right, see, I... At the Edison office, Edison location, we will get together on Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay, and do you have, at the present time, any services at all on Mondays through Fridays?
Monday to Friday, no.
Okay, and at the, if the board were to grant the site plan approval, and if you were to construct the facility on South Middlebush Road, would you follow the same timeframes? You would have your services on Saturday and Sunday, and your facility would not be open at all on Mondays, Monday through Friday?
Monday to Friday, until, unless, as I mentioned to you in the chart, when the priest comes from India, then we have three days program, and it is twice a year. That time, the Fridays will be there, otherwise, the rest of the year, we will have more on Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay, so what you're saying is that there, oh, here it is, okay, that when you have your high holy days, when your spiritual leader comes from India, you will have a three-day program, which will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, is that correct?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so then, your facility will be open for worship on two Fridays during the course of a given year, and Saturdays and Sundays, and it will not be open Mondays through Thursdays or other Fridays other than those two Fridays, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, now, in the chart that we have marked into evidence, you also indicate on that chart the times of your services, that your Saturday services are, the facility is open from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Your Sunday, the facility is open from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., and one Saturday, it is open from actually 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., is that correct?
That's right.
And that's how you are currently operating in Edison, and that's how you will in the future operate at the Franklin Township facility, is that accurate?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, and you indicated also in the chart, which will hopefully help the board and the members of the public, your three-day program involves the visit to the United States from your spiritual leader, is that correct?
Yes.
And when he comes twice a year, once in the spring and once in the summer, you will have an event, a religious event, on a Friday evening from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and then you will have, on Saturday and Sunday, you will have events from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, this building is going to be used for religious and cultural purposes for your religion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it is not intended, and you will not be renting it out to third parties to use the building? Is that correct?
No, no.
Okay, and in your religion, will there be any weddings or funerals that would take place at the property?
No, sir.
And then I indicated, or you indicated on the chart, that all of your activities will take place inside the building, except when you have the high holy day, you may have a procession outside for a short period of time, which is a religious procession, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you have no intention of having outdoor activities such as carnivals, itnics, or any other social events that would take place outside, correct?
No, sir, yes.
And also on the chart that we have provided, you have listed the average attendance at your services on Saturday and Sunday. And that's the attendance that you have charted and taken at your Edison facility, correct?
Yes, sir.
And has that never, in the last two or three years before the pandemic, been a fairly constant number? Has the attendings averaged the seventy-five to a hundred on Saturdays, and the fifty to seventy-five on Sunday, and the larger attendance on the one Sunday of 125 to 140? Have that been pretty constant?
Yes, very, pretty, pretty constant rate.
Okay. And do you have a, your temple now, or will you, at the new facility, have a formal religious service as maybe the Catholics or Episcopalians, where there's a time that a service is conducted? Or is it basically that the building is open from the times that you have set forth on this chart, from, let's say, on a Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so that people can come in and worship when they want, have some fellowship, and then leave? Is that how you operate?
Yes, yes.
So you have no formal services, so the seventy-five to a hundred people that you have listed on the first line of the chart would come in at various times during the day, between 11:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., and it's not that all seventy-five or a hundred people will come at one time and leave at the same time, is that accurate?
Right, they come in several ways.
Okay, and generally, when somebody comes to your current facility, how long do they stay?
See, it depends on the program that they are interested in. If the cultural program is going on for the kids, so they finish the cultural program and they leave. Somebody wants to do some reading, and they finish the reading, and they leave. So it depends on their interest during the day.
So during the day, you have your gods that the people come and worship, and you have religious and cultural programs that take place during various times during the day?
Right, yes.
And as was described by Mr. Mystery, the architect, there is in the building a stage, and there's also an area near part of the stage where you will be housing your deities, is that accurate?
Yes, yes.
And then you have the area that, on the other side, where the members congregate, where there are some of those areas will have chairs, and others will be areas where people will come and worship, and they'll use, they'll sit on the floor, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and there's also an area where they will gather after they worship and have fellowship, and there'll be some tables and chairs set up in that area?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, now, the... Tell the board, when the priest comes from India, the three-day program, does that differ in any way from what you've just described as your regular weekly programs?
Yes, when the priest comes there, the more people surrounding the area who are interested in the spiritual path, they will attend. And during that, it is a spiritual discourse is going on, at a different timing. So they will come, they will come at different ways. And usually, there are, when the spiritual leader comes, you know, that time, some culture program also being conducted, and mainly focused on the discourse of the preaching.
Okay, and when the spiritual leader comes from India, he will stay in the house that is currently on the property?
Yes.
Okay, and if he comes to the United States the two times of the year for the religious holy days or religious events, will he come to the United States just for the three days, and then he'll leave, or will he stay around for, you know, a period of time while he's here?
No, he's here, he comes, he comes for a month or two, a month and a half at a time, and probably then nearby states and throughout the United States, wherever the other centers are there, you know?
Okay, so your religion, your particular sect has other locations in the United States, is that what you're saying?
Yes, they have the centers. They don't have any location, this is the first location we'd be in the United States.
This facility here, well, you're operating now in Edison, correct?
Right.
And you're going to move that to this facility, should it be approved? But this would be the first one of those facilities of your religion in the United States, is that what you're saying?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, and so that if there are people that worship the gods that you worship in the central Jersey area, or in the state of New Jersey, they would have to come, they would come to this facility, correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Any questions on the board? Yes, I've got a couple of questions. Okay, you stated that this would be the first worship facility in the United, in the state?
Yes.
Okay, so previously, there had, there's never, he's never come to this state?
He come to the states, and he goes to different, different places at that time, because we, he comes here, and he goes to the different, different places where we have the different centers. As that we are renting place in Edison, in the different states, people are renting some space, and the spiritual leader goes there and get together, mainly mostly in hotel.
Okay, so you, right now, have been in Edison. How long have you been in Edison?
I think two, three years.
And before that?
This is the, before that, it is before, it is, this is a group they have started, and little bit, little bit by, it is growing. So right now, we are, we are at this level, seventy-five people, 200 people in the central, central Jersey. So that's why we thought that...
So most of your parishioners are from the Edison area, I take it then, right?
Around that, around, you know, Edison, Scottway, South Plainfield, and some Princeton, and, you know?
Yeah, I, so you're the only church in this state? This is confusing me. You're the only house of religion in this state, then?
No, the facility that we are, we are, we are, we are trying to build this facility, that's why we, this, we own, see, right now, everywhere, we are renting the places. So this is the only place where we have the place to be called our own place, and we have the, we have the deities, and deities will be there. No other places has deities anywhere else. So it is significant that we worship in front of deities is more beneficial. And where are the other places that we get together? Suppose in hotel, we get together, have some preaching from the religious leader, and then, then, then everybody goes their home. So to have our own place, it is, it is better to have our own place so that we can establish, and that, that, and we, you know, we have more comfortable that priest can come here, stay here, and spread the knowledge of the self-realization for everybody.
I understand that, but I'm just, I just can't get it through my head, I guess, that you're the only house of worship of this kind in the state?
I think what Mr. Rich, I think what he's saying, if I may, and Bupendra, correct me if I'm wrong, what he's saying is that there are other places that worship the same. In Indian religion, they worship certain deities, and they go to temples that have those deities. This facility would be the first one that they own, this religion will own and operate in the state of New Jersey. They currently exist in Edison where they rent. He has indicated that there are other places that worship the same deities, but they don't own any property or any houses of worship. They rent in hotels or other places, and this would be their first self-owned and operated house of worship.
Well, we've had, we've had several applications that we've passed. That's what, that's what's confusing me. Are they different religions, or?
No, no. Right. So this is the unique way of worship, and hence called non-sectarian temple. Here, all, all major sect of Hinduism, like Jainism, Sikhism, or Sivism, or Vishnuism, are worshiped at one platform. And at this, at this place, the... And at this, at this place, the study of spiritual science called Akram Science take place. The founder of Akram Science, Dada Bhagwan, who attained total bliss and found way to salvation in nineteen fifty-eight through Akram Science. Anyone who seek ultimate salvation can achieve this goal by self-realizations. And all deities daily three times puja is not required here as compared to the other typical Hindu temples.
Got it. Hey, I have a question. How many, would you know, how many people in the state of New Jersey would be considered members of your sect?
See, it whole, New Jersey is around about two-hundred people.
Okay, would we be then looking to see more of those people in the future attending your facility?
Excuse me?
Does that mean that your facility, when it's operating, will be attracting more of the people who believe in, who are part of your sect, who may not live in the immediate area right now to, that don't have a place to go to that's convenient?
No, see, these, these... Right, but see, right now, these people, we have noticed that at the central Jersey locations, people for these many years, we haven't gone more people. That is consistency seventy-five to hundred people in that. And when the priest comes, that time some more people coming from the other part of New Jersey.
Okay, and that's, the second question is, when you said there were seventy-five people who are members right now.
Right.
So when you have two-twenty-five to two-fifty or a hundred-and-twenty-five to a hundred-and-forty, where are these additional people coming from?
Yeah, they can come from the tri-state, from, they come from Pennsylvania, if they come from, you know, from the other surrounding states.
Okay, when the new facility starts to operate, how do we know these attendance numbers that are on your chart aren't going to double or triple?
See, we, we, this, we have this procedure, when the spiritual leader comes here at that time, when we meet at the hotel, sometime E Hotel in Edison, that time we know that how many peoples are coming, coming, coming to that for last couple of years. So based on that, we see that these constant numbers are there. And based on that, if I'm here for five, six years, and these numbers are constant here. So we think that this will be the numbers that are gonna be there.
And what if there's a lot more? Count what you can, a lot.
No, see, he travels, he travels to other states too. Suppose if he goes to, in Pennsylvania, in like Harrisburg. So people don't have to come here. The Pennsylvania people can connect in there. In Queens, New Jersey, so Queens, New York, he goes there. So the people coming from New York, they will have that privilege to be there. So they don't have to come here. When he comes here, it's mostly, mostly the, it is, it is, New Jerseyan peoples are coming here. He goes to Chicago, then the Chicago people will be there. He goes to Jacksonville, Florida. So that's why he travels.
Okay, on your chart, you list days and what is gonna be occurring on those certain days. Are there any other special days during the year for special different activities? Or is what's on the chart it for period?
No, we, we...
Mr. Thomas, if I may, that chart are the days that we will be open and the times that we will be open. We will never be open on a Monday through Thursday and other than, or on Fridays other than twice a year. So all of our activities will be basically on the hours set forth on Saturday and Sunday, except for those two Fridays.
Okay, so the facility that's being built, that's going, on the average, is gonna only be open five days a month?
It is going to be open a hundred, basically a hundred and six days out of the year. Every Saturday and Sunday and two Fridays. That's it.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I guess next witness, unless Mark has something.
Well, we'll be next witness. I think we have, we've had given the objecting attorneys an opportunity to ask questions and then we open up to the public to ask questions. So why, I assume Ms. Merritt and his bail are here? Do they wish to ask any questions?
Hi, yes, this is Martina Bailey. I will have some questions. Jen Norick will be going first.
Yes, I apologize. I was on mute. I was introducing myself, Martina. My apologies. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Jennifer Kinnock, and Praise Me Shulman, and Diarminial. We represent the four ex who reside at six-four-six South Little Bush Road, who are joining property owners to this subject property. I just have a few follow-up questions for you, Mr. Patel. Thank you for preparing that chart. It lays out clearly what services you will be having and what days and so forth. I just have a few follow-up questions for the, for the... Is that chart uploaded on the website that we could download it?
Yes.
Great, thank you. You mentioned that, just to confirm, you mentioned the chart that you work with services Saturday and Sunday at specific times. So it is your testimony that you have no events whatsoever on Monday through Friday?
No, we don't have any events.
You mentioned in the chart that there is a three-day program with an outside procession. Where on the property is that procession going to be occurring?
No, it is just, you know, just to welcome when he comes from India. So it is a very customary in India that any dignitaries and with high respect, we welcome, usually in a parking lot, just from parking lot to the building entrance. That's right, that's right.
Will there be music at that procession?
Sometimes, yes.
Any music that would be playing that complies with the northernics of the township?
No, it is not that, that, that big noise. You know, the people, like, say, a hundred people, they sing together. That and some light music will be there, but it is not, not big.
Okay, thank you. Is the religion that you are practicing, is that the same religion as the proposed religious use across the street or across down the road?
No. No.
So it's not the same?
No.
Thank you. The, I know the architect testified previously with respect to certain rooms and so forth located within the proposed building. And I just wanted to follow up with you with regard to those rooms. The plan show a staging, a stage and a changing room. Do you anticipate having concerts or plays or anything?
No, in the changing room, it is when the performers are doing that and for that, for convenience, it is there.
And that's open to members only, not open to the general public?
No, no, only the members, only the members.
And what is the green room?
Green room? Yeah, hold on. Let me look at the... Where do you see the green room?
Let me pull up the plan. If you look at the center of the architectural plan, there is right above the stage and curtain platform, there says green room?
Maybe audio, 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 video rooms.
Will food or alcohol be served on the premises?
Pardon?
Will food and or alcohol be served on the premises? I see there's a kitchen proposed.
No, no, food and no alcohol.
Okay, so, but yes to food?
Yes, for food, right.
Okay, is that during the Saturdays and Sundays as well as the three-day program?
Yes.
Since there is a kitchen proposed, do you propose types of deliveries in terms of the food?
Yes, we cater out, we cater out, and this is just a warm-up.
And how often will those deliveries be?
Twice maybe, because twice, suppose lunchtime and dinner time.
Okay, and that's by like a box truck? It's not gonna be by like a tractor trailer or anything like that?
No, 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 no.
Okay, members, do they mostly arrive by private transportation or do they utilize public transportation as well?
No, they come to private.
Since this is being characterized as an institute, will research be conducted here or teaching of any classes?
For...
For the members?
No, no, no.
How big is the facility in Edison approximately?
How big the facility?
Yeah, compared to what's being proposed here.
No, see, we have there, because there is a smaller facility, we have restricted, we cannot do some, 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 some programs. Only, we have, we have the, we watch the video spiritual discourse and some kind of discussion and some kind of songs that we sing. That's all we can do here. But now in here, in this, we have, we can do some kind of dance, you know, and some, little bit more privilege to have a bigger facility so we can, we can, we can culture, we can do the good culture program, you know?
Thank you. Do you anticipate any staff at this location?
No.
You had testified that not all, for instance, seventy-five to a hundred would come at the same time or leave at the same time when you have your events on Saturday or Sunday. What would be the maximum number of people at a single time would you anticipate?
Maybe, see, they come at different, different timing. So, you know, so, and they come at least two, three people in a car. So, so, so it is not, you know, it is not in a constant thing, you know. They come at, that's why timing is also from eleven to eight. So they have, they have a good, good, good time. They can, you know, somebody wants to spend just two hours, so they can come at two hours, you know?
So you don't really know what a maximum number would be at any one particular time, the number of people?
Like, 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 twenty-five to thirty people at maximum at a time.
Great, thank you. Do you have to register for these events that occur Saturday, Sunday and the three-day program or the members just can go anytime?
No, 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 registers don't need required.
Is there a maximum limit of the number of people that can attend these events?
Maximum what?
Number of people that can attend these events? Is there a limit?
No, but we know, we know the, who is coming because it is every week, same people coming and coming and so... So we know who is coming and who is not coming, what time, you know, usually they come. So by, you know, to manage seventy-five to a hundred people is very easy.
You had mentioned that you're hoping to grow with respect to the amount of members. Will there ever be a maximum number of members that are allowed?
See, since locally people, this is, this is good for the surrounding local people, sounds like a central Jersey. People don't drive far distant to come here for just for that because they have their own centers too. In Queens, New York, they have the center. So they go over there. They don't need to come here.
Okay, do you anticipate closing of any of the centers that you're renting right now when you open this institute?
Yes, we, once we, because that is...
You're going to close the Edison location?
Yes, please, yeah, yeah, sure.
Well, I think that is all the questions I have. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Patel.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next.
Hi, this is Martina Bailey. I don't know if my camera's on. I can't see myself. I'm not seeing myself, but, okay. Good evening, Mr. Patel.
How are you? Good.
I've lost the screen. I'm not seeing, okay, there you are. Just want to follow up on a couple of questions.
Sure.
I think, I think I heard you say that this would be a facility, a space for multiple different sects. Did I hear that right? So, you know, Hinduism and other kinds of sects?
Right, see...
Go ahead, Pender.
No, see, this is, this, the belief of this science, this is not a religion or this is, this is the spiritual science. This is study of the self-realizations, how to keep the separation of body and the soul. That's all. Every creature, every human being are a recall. Because if you see everybody as a soul, then you don't see, so you don't see the difference. And, and this, this, the Dada Bhagwan got the spiritual knowledge in nineteen fifty-eight. What he felt is that this is the Akram Science. And that's why he says, why to, why to, you know, the Hinduism, there are a lot of sect. So, so, so he said, there's no need to do the sectarianism. So this, he got this principle, non-sectarian. So, so it is, it is, you know, it is a non-sectarian temple.
Thank you for that. You know, you also indicated, you've been around for two or three years in New Jersey, but you've seen the numbers of your attendees has stabilized, has pretty much flattened, you said that. And you're basing your current development proposal on the assumptions that those numbers are not gonna change. Is that, is that a... The assumptions that those numbers are not gonna change. Is that, is that a fan characterization?
Right, see, since, since, since we have noticed that this many years, and it is, it has been constant. And I don't, I don't think so, it is, it is, it is, we anticipate this. This is the, the cor- the correct number at this moment, and, and because every. Every uh state has their own, own, own centers, so, so this is good.
Right, um, but you also said you're, you're growing little by little, and it, it, you know, I think it's very reasonable. That a, um, a, a religious or spiritual organization wishes to increase its numbers. Um, so I'm a little bit confused by that comment you made. Are you growing or are you? Or, or, let me ask you this, are you intending to grow, whether or not you actually are growing at this point?
No.
You're not intending to grow?
No, because.
Sorry, please, please go ahead, you're not intending to grow.
No, no, see, there are a lot of, lot of uh places in New Jersey. So people can go wherever they feel, feel comfortable. And, and those who are, 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 are with, with, with this sect. And, and they are, they're comfortable here.
I, I think a question that's been on, on m- many of our minds, certainly my, my clients. I should have noted at the beginning, I apologize, I'm representing Ray and John Snyder, who are um, the owners of the Snyder Farm next door. Um. Um, the question is, why, why, why are you proposing such a large facility? The facility you're proposing has a, has a worship area of almost seven thousand square feet, and the whole building. Is, is over twenty-one thousand feet. Um, I, I certainly haven't, haven't been able to understand the answer to that question.
I'm going to object to the question and the characterization of it being a quite large facility and. The building is substantially less than what is permitted in the zone. Uh, it meets all the requirements of the zone for uh building coverage. Uh, and is, large is a subjective term, that may be the feeling of your client. Uh, it may be that my client doesn't feel the building is large, so I, I would object to the form of the question.
Okay, I will rephrase the question if I may, um, could you help us understand the rationale behi- behind the proposed site of the facility? Given, given, I'm sorry, to, to clarify, given that you are, are really only expecting an average of about seventy-five. Fifty, uh, for the most part, with the exception of the, a couple of events in the year.
You see, see, in, when we have two hundred people, and when the spiritual leader comes. See, when, when you have, you see the Indian dances, the, when, when we perform in front of the deities. We need some space, in here, the ladies are, 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 are dancing in a, in a circle. Different than the men, and we don't interact between each other. So we need, when, whenever we need space to move around while, while we are dancing, while we are doing the, so we need some space there.
Okay, how often do you have dancing?
Whenever, see, whenever we have, we, 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 uh, we, we feel like, like artist when the spiritual leader comes. And when we get, see, one Saturdays, we have one, that Saturdays, we have hundred and twenty-five to hundred and forty people. At that time, we feel, we feel like that we need, we need to praise the God right now. And we need to, and, and uh to perform the dance, and so, so we need some space for, for that.
And, and when you say deities, I'm, I'm envisioning that those are, are those statues, um, where would those be embodied in, in statues in the worship area?
Yes.
Right, okay, because the other question relatedly was, um, it seems, it seems quite. You, you're proposing a thirty-five foot um height, um, which, which also um. Has raised some questions because of the visibility from South Middle Bush Road, um, and the visibility from my client's property. Which is open fields, and so, um, you know, having your temple. Quite close to my client's property and being thirty-five feet high, um, would be quite visible to the surrounding neighbors. Um, i- is that height to accommodate the, the deities or, or some other reason?
Deities are, no. Deities are, are certain, certain heights, but we need, when, when you are dancing. You need, you know, you have warm up, and lots of people, like hundred, two hundred people in that. You need some, some space, open space, so that you feel comfortable.
Okay, um. I, I, I wanna pick up on, on, on a comment you made earlier, which is that you, you said, you, you described your practice as. Not a religion, but a, a, a kind of a spiritual practice. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, it's a spiritual, it's a spiritual sense.
Right, okay. And you mentioned that you have cultural events. Are, are those cultural events purely secular or are those? Um, related to that spirituality?
See, secular, the, the, whoever the deity is that we are, we are preaching. That, see, in Hinduism, see, that's why the, it, we, it is a platform of between. There is a civil, civilism, Jainism, and Vaisnaism, like a Krishna will be there, the, the, the. Simandhasaami will be there, and Shiro will be there, so. So all, all deities will be on, on, on the platform.
Okay. Um, y- y- you'd mentioned, um. Or, I, I, I wanna just ask you about um, the groundbreaking ceremony that occurred in two thousand and fifteen. Um, you know, that was reported in the local newspaper, um. And, and there were statements publicly made at that event, um, that the, the expectation for attendance. Was, was far greater than what you're suggesting tonight, um, in excess of three hundred people on a regular basis. And then many more for the larger events. My question is, um. What has changed since the, the, the prior sort of conception of this temple? That leads you to describe a, 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 a lower number of attendees?
Whatever we are presenting right now, that is the, the current one.
Okay. So, so were the, the, the statements, and I, I realize maybe you wouldn't be able to comment on this. The statements that were made in two thousand and fifteen, um, by, by one of your representatives of the board. Um, were, were those aspirational numbers, or, um, were they based on the expectation that your attendance rate? Would, would get larger, and I'm, I'm sorry to keep, um, pursuing with this line of questions. The reason I'm asking you these questions, because I think it's important for the board to understand, and my clients would really like to understand. With some reasonable certainty, how large a gathering is likely to, to, um. To happen.
I'm, I'm gonna object again. First of all, I don't even know if Mr. Patel was there in two thousand and fifteen. When somebody made some statements that you are attributing toward this temple. Uh, so I don't know if he, if he is capable of commenting on him, I don't know who made the statements. Uh, I think the testimony is pretty clear as to what is going on in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, both in Edison and what is projected, and what may have been said by somebody in two thousand and fifteen who was unidentified. And may not even be a member of this congregation at this time, is probably, in my opinion, irrelevant.
I, I would agree, and, and, and he didn't provide that as part of his testimony, so.
Okay, fair enough, um, I, I'll note that I, I would like to request, uh, after this hearing. Have a, an exhibit marked and entered, which would be the, the news item that I was referring to. Which is from the Franklin Township reported, it did September fourteenth, twenty twenty. Um, I, I will be asking that that be submitted, um, before this hearing. And if that, if that, if that news, um, reporting that I'm referring to, the individual I was referring to was. Suresh Patel, who is described as a California resident, but, but that's okay, I'm, I'm.
Miss, Miss Bailey, if I may, i- if you're gonna offer an exhibit at some time, can you please provide it in advance so I can review it? And if I do have an objection, fine, if I don't have an objection, then it makes all our lives a lot easier.
I know, I, yeah, I, I, I will do that for the next hearing, sure. Okay, I, I, I'll ask one other question, just, just, uh, in terms of the numbers of attendees. If, in the, in the event, it, it, it's not unreasonable that your congregation could, though, that could happen. You know, i- if more and more people attend, this is a fairly significant development. Like you are purchasing, purchased your own property, and it becomes the first property that you are in the U.S. Is that, is that what I understand that being?
No, if, if there is a case, then we had to rent some, some, some other place where, where they're more comf- more comfortable. If some, somebody, more people coming from North Jersey, then instead of let all people drive here. Let's, let's, let, rent some place over there and have the, the, the religious things over there.
But, but I thought the purpose of, uh, a part of the purpose of purchasing this property, as you said, to have a place of your own. Which is, makes perfect sense, it's a very reasonable sort of thing to want, to be able to have your congregation without renting a place. Um. I, if that's the case, and, and you start to attract more people who are interested, there's a very large Indian community in central and northern Jersey. It's not unreasonable, you could begin seeing many more people attending, um, services. And, and if that's the case, how would you accommodate parking, for example? There are only one hundred and fifty-seven parking spaces being provided, have, I, I, I'm wondering if you've thought that through?
No, see, first of all, as I said, that there are, there are lots of temples everywhere, every town. Even if you, if you, every town has Hindu temple, so, so, so. People are, are, we are not anticipating that, that is growth. And last five years, we haven't changed anything, so, so we are not anticipating that, that there'll be, you know. Growth like that.
Okay, but I, I thought I heard you say that you're, you're gonna terminate the lease in the Edison facility once you start operating, if you start operating.
Right, because same number of, same number of, uh, attendees over there, same number of attendees, uh, attendees are coming here.
So you're expecting that all of those attendees will drive to Franklin Township?
Because, because they are from the same area, this is from the central Jersey.
Okay, how, how far field do you think your attendees wo- would drive? In other words, I mean, you, you have, you have locations in northern Jersey where your devotees can, can go.
Yeah, if, one or two people coming from far, far distant, but mostly coming from, from, from the here.
Okay, from, from the townships that you enumerated earlier.
Right, right, right.
Um. I, I, I just had a few more questions, and thank you for your patience, you, about the existing dwelling, um. There is an, an existing dwelling on the site, as you know, i- is that, is that currently occupied or being used?
Pardon?
Is that currently occupied or being used?
No, 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 pandemic, everything is closed.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a single family residence, so, um. You know, I don't know what the state of the house is, but, but you're saying that it's currently vacant?
Yeah, yeah, it's currently vacant, right?
Yes, um, and, and what, what, what's your intended use of that, of that house?
Which, which, which property are talking about?
The, the house that's on the site.
It is vacant right now.
It's vacant right now. What, what are your plans for that house?
Whenever spiritual leader comes, I don't think so pandemic will be last, last forever. But, but, but once, once it is over, then spiritual leader will, leader will come and he will stay here.
So, so, right, that would be two times a year.
Yeah.
Right, for, for how long? For a couple of days? You, you said that your spiritual leader tends to travel when, when he comes. So how, how many days would he be actually occupying that house?
So. I'm gonna object, but first the relevance of how many days he's occupying the house. It, it, it's a house for a member of the clergy, clergy, which is accessory to a house of worship. Whether he occupies it three days or three hundred days is irrelevant, I object.
Okay, I can, I can tell you why I'm asking a question, which is that the, the location and the existence of that house. Um, i- i- is a large reason for why the location of the temple is where it is. And that location has, um, required, um, the request of variances. Um, including a, a variance from the rear yard setback, which reflects my clients and their property.
Um, this, this Bailey, the testimony of Mr. Orman was that the location of the temple. Was moved as a result of discussions with the township, uh, to move it out of the center of the property. And that's why it's located where it is. The house happens to exist on the property, the house is entitled to be there. Uh, and so we are working with existing conditions based on requests that we have to relocate the temple. And Mr. Orman said that this is the, the new location of the temple. All the way from your client's property was the most appropriate location for the temple. So it wasn't based on the fact that the house was there, it was based on a request to relocate it from the center of the property to the rear of the property.
Okay, but, but Mr. Orman also avoided directly answering my question, which was why, why could that existing dwelling not be. Located somewhere else in order to avoid a variant?
The dwelling exists.
Okay, fair enough, I'm not questioning your client's right to, to use, to use an accessory building on the property. For, uh, for, for purposes incidental to its, to its religious purposes, um. So ju- just to be clear, that, that existing dwelling will be vacant the rest of the year when, when the spiritual leader is not staying?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, bear with me. I think, go, just going back to one question, um, if you can bear with me. I'm trying to understand how, how you're characterizing your religion, you said it wasn't actually a religion. Um, but you're registered as a five oh one C three. Uh, and presumably that means you'll, you'll be treated like any other religious organization, is that correct?
What was, what was the question?
The, the, the question is, you actually said that you described your, uh, your organization as not being a religion.
You see, you see, now, see, religion, Hindu, Hinduism is religion, is a part of the religion. But, but the, 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 the concept in Hinduism is that. The difference here, within the Hinduism, the difference here is that, uh, we are more focusing. On the, on the uh spiritual rather than ritual. See, some, some ritual that you must worship the deity three times a day and do these, do these. Of the, all, 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 uh, uh, all, uh, uh, holy, uh, uh. Festivals, you must, must do this and that. Here, it is, it is religious, religion. But, but the, the concept is self-realization, just study, the science. That what, what, as I, I mentioned to you before, that this is a spiritual science. And the philosophy of this is, 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 is within the power. And the philosophy of this is, 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 within the part of the, uh, the parameter of the Hinduism, this is the, because reincarnation, we believe in reincarnation and so the things. So these, these is the spiritual, spiritual science, study of the spiritual science.
Yep, yep, and just, just one more question, please. Um, could you say a little bit more about the cultural events that you intend to have? Um, could you give us an example of a couple of those types of events? You mentioned.
Garba, you, you, have you heard about garba, garba?
I, I haven't.
See, right, you should enjoy the garba. When, when the new, the music starts, nobody wants to stay in the, the chair. These, they, 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 they want to, to dance because the dance, keeping in the presence of the deities. And that, that dance, you are dancing with, with, with remembering of the deity in, and, and you're, you're dancing, uh, with, with that.
Okay. You mentioned children's reading as another example of a, of a cultural, uh, a, another type of cultural event. Now, is that reading also related to the deities and to, to the spiritual?
Yeah, 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 s- s- same songs, same songs.
Okay. I have no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I believe we did. And let me take the opportunity to remind the public to, um, use the raise hand function if they're in WebEx or star three if they're calling in. I have a Greg Foster, I'll unmute you at this point. Mr. Foster, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, thank you. Greg Foster, thirty-nine, Lidded Drive in Somerset. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm a little confused because, uh, you had said that this would be the first location of a place for the particular sect, but then when we, or when Michelle asked about occupation and quantity of people, et cetera, said, well, there are other ones that they can go to. There's one in Queens, there's one over here. So I, I'm a little confused why it would be the first one if there are other ones.
I think the testimony was that this would be the first location that was owned by this religious group and that all of the other places are rentals. That was his testimony, that they do have other locations, but this would be the first one that they would own.
Okay, so it's quite possible then, I assume, that people from the other locations could be coming here as well? Is that correct?
No, no, see, from, from Edison.
You know, like, uh, people from North Jersey or Queens or something could come here if they like whoever happens to be there that particular day.
No, this.
I, I don't know, can you repeat that question? I'm not following it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, uh, uh, understand if people from other parts of the state, or one of the other locations, would be coming here occasionally if they happen to like whoever is there or leaving or whatnot at that particular time, um, which would obviously bring up the number of people.
And, and conversely, somebody can go to another facility in Queens or something was going on there on a given day? So that would bring up their number and bring our number down? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, well, yeah, I, yes, they could go to another location, that is correct. I, I, I deny that. Um, but, you know, basically, I, you know, maybe I misunderstood it was that it was the only one for that particular sect. And the other thing that I asked last time, and I don't know if we really got an hon- honest answer for it, including today, is why do we need a thirty-five-foot height for a one-floor building?
A- a- and again, the answer is, it's allowed, he's, it, it, it meets the ordinance requirement and if, if the members of the congregation are, you wanna build a building thirty-five feet high, high, they have the right to do it. You can build a single-family house on that property at thirty-five feet height. If we didn't own it, then you go in and get a building permit and build a thirty-five-foot-high house. That's permitted in the zone.
And, uh, what zone is it that this is then?
This property is in the A-zone.
The A-zone, which I, uh, is my understanding incorrect? Is that a foreign zone?
It permits dwellings, it permits houses of worship as conditional uses, it permits agriculture, and there are probably some other uses that are permitted. I don't have the whole ordinance or ordinance.
Okay, I really have the ordinance, that's all I was asking.
It's essentially a low-density residential zone.
Low-density residential zone, okay. Cause this will certainly increase the density on certain days and, and times and we haven't even addressed traffic or roadway or anything. And I know that's not tonight, so I'm not gonna bring that up, I'm just, uh, discussing. Um, if you have any other questions, go right ahead. If you have anybody else.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll, uh, we'll find somebody else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. And I believe we have Barbara Lawrence. Go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
Okay, thank you. My name is Barbara Lawrence. I live on South Middle Bush Road, where I have lived for forty years. Uh, I just have one question of Mr. Patel. Uh, the, it, it's the density question, but it's only, uh, a curiosity, a question about whether, because this will be the first facility owned by the sect and, um, would not people from other parts of New Jersey, I'm not talking about far away, but would be tempted to join your congregation and travel a little further and thus increase the size? Not, I'm not talking about five hundred people, but would people who might live in, um, Hunterdon County, uh, or, or Union be inclined to come, join your congregation because of the quality of the facility versus a hotel room or rented facility of some other kind?
See, the, this based on the, of, of five years, I know, I'm being, I'm here. Uh, first, they, they, uh, they should, they have different option. Now, now, somebody who, who believes in this, uh, they, they join with us. But, but as I said to you, those people are coming from, from central Jersey, in Edison, we are anticipating those company, those people are coming, coming here. And, uh, the, the growth that, that we are seeing, that there is not much and, uh, for, for these many years. So I, I don't think so, so that, that will be an, an, an issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Okay, and so I can just remind the public to put their hand down after we're done asking questions. Uh, the next person is Carol Crowe. Excuse me again if I mispronounced your name, go ahead.
You pronounce it perfectly, thank you. Good evening, good evening, Mr. Patel, I'm at thirteen. Hello, I'm at thirteen Marco Polo Court. I've been a resident for thirty-plus years with my family. Um, I admire what you are looking to do, but I don't feel that we can compare your five years to what this new facility can be because you've said your population hasn't changed, your congregation hasn't changed much in five years. But you also said that you want this new facility so that you can offer more dance and more activities and so many more wonderful things than you've ever been able to offer in a limited rental space. So I think it is unfair, I shouldn't stand there, but can you guarantee now that you're going to be offering all of these wonderful things, that those things are not going to draw more population to this area? Perhaps both your congregation and deciding to move closer to offer things that nobody else can?
See, see, these, these, all kind of, the, the dancing, all the things are, are also performed in different, different temples also. So these are our own people who are, are attending at this time. This is for them to give, to put more room. You see, we are, the facility that we are right now, we, we don't do the dances over there because, because it is, it is good for only, only the virtual, uh, uh, listening to, to, to our, our leader. Uh, and, and this, this place, we, our own people who are attending, they will have little access to, access space.
Yes, I understand that, but I also can see that it makes it much more desirable for many, many more people who perhaps didn't come to your place in Edison because you couldn't offer so much space for the dancers and for all of the other things. So now, it's not a rental, it's a permanent location, which is citing for people to join. So can you guarantee us that you will not allow your congregation to go above a certain number, that includes parking spaces, et cetera, on any occasion?
See, first they have to be living, then they, they want to come here and sometimes if you have no capacity, then you can say no.
If, if I may, Mr. Thomas, uh, just to, to refresh everybody's recollection. I mean, Mr. Patel testified that, you know, right now, even if we take the high holy days of two hundred and fifty people and give him the common number of three people to a vehicle, uh, that comes out to about eighty vehicles. Uh, we have a hundred and fifty parking spaces. So in the event that there is growth, uh, in this congregation, there is room for some growth, uh, that's built into the plans, uh, that's built into the parking. You, you, you don't build something to make it obsolete today, move in. So there is some built-in ability to grow and there is additional parking. On the other hand, we are also limited by the parking because we have a hundred and fifty spaces. We can't park on South Middle Bush Road, we can't park on fire, in the firehouse. If, if the temple gets to be of a certain size where the congregation grows, uh, then obviously they may have to look for another location or a spin-off location. Or, as some of the other temples in this municipality, when they have a major event, they have it off-site someplace else and this, the temple will still function for their normal Saturday and Sunday. Thanks. These things can be handled and accommodated in what we're doing right now.
And how are you going to accommodate it? I know on most occasions, you will not have a large number of cars at one time from what Mr. Patel has said. However, on those special times during the year where your people has come in, how are we going to accommodate the traffic? There's only one lane in each direction when you have to pass CD cars or perhaps a hundred and fifty cars, all trying to come in from both directions within perhaps an hour's worth of time for your special event? That will completely close down South Middle Bush Road.
The traffic is another issue for another expert witness. We're not dealing with traffic at the moment.
Okay, I was, that's fine, I'll wait, I'll hold on that one, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, but South Middle Bush Road is a little road. My objection is to the whole thing, on principle. My objection is this. I understand.
All right, so, uh, to the members of the public, uh, I don't see anybody at this point, Mr. Chairman. I would suggest we leave a, a minute or so to give the public an opportunity to raise their hand. Again, either using the raised hand function in WebEx or star three if you call in. Any questions of this witness? All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm scrolling the list here. I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand.
Okay, then we will close the public. Uh, at this point, we need to set up a date for the next hearing.
Mr. Haley, what would be your preference? And I also need to confirm that Ms. Dalton would be available for that date so we can let her, if she's not unmuted, we can unmute her. Uh, well, we, it looks like we have some room on May sixth, which is the next meeting. Is Ms. Dalton there?
Yep, I'm already scheduled for that one.
Oh, on, on the other application, I may not be going, so you'll be here for that one.
Yeah, I'm available, no problem.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I would request that this matter be carried to May sixth. Uh, I think I've given the board an extension of time through the end of May, but to play a second. I will grant an extension of time to the end of June.
Till the end of June, okay? May sixth, May sixth then, correct? You said.
Just, uh, yes, just give us a moment to bring up the, uh, WebEx information and the caller number for the public.
Okay, can you not hear me, really? Can you guys hear me on the board?
Okay. Yes.
But it's not, it's not up on screen.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm right here.
All right, so for those members of the public that wish to be a part of the meeting for Dada Badlon that's being carried to May sixth, um, you can join the meeting by going to Franklin T W P N J dot org forward slash home forward slash components forward slash calendar forward slash event one seven five nine nine forward slash two one nine three. And that will get you into the Franklin Township website that you can join the, the large link that you see appearing on the screen right now, rather than read that all off. For those of you calling in, you can reach the, uh, meeting by calling one four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight. The access code is one seven three nine one five five three six six. All of this information will be uploaded to the Franklin Township website, appearing on the summary of action for the agenda for this evening.
It'll be May sixth at seven thirty P M.
May sixth at seven thirty P M.
Okay, if there's no further business, we will adjourn the meeting. Everybody, thanks for your help and input and have a good weekend.
Thank you.